May I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the May 26 County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones, which mine is not. And if you need a listening device, Ken is in the back room. And with that, we will move on to regular business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion as second, any changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings from 5/19/2015. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion as second, any changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is the bills to be paid in the amount of $1,565,598.31.
Pay the bills.
Motion. And a second comments, Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, we have a lot of bills today. And, you know, I sometimes touch on some of the highlights, and we have huge highlights today, but just up and down the list, there's some good-sized bills. And we have $570,000 in debt services, we have $271,000 to armor correctional health, and we have just about $211,000 for highway construction bills. But there are legal bills to outside attorneys for $10,000, and, you know, many of those size bills, so it's a big payday for somebody.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. We have Inter-Lakes Community Action Partnership 2014 Annual Report is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is applications for abatement. Cal Helsa, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners. I bring forward to you five requests from permanently and totally disabled veterans who will not read their names, will reference them for the record ID. Record ID 81186, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $1,803.75. Record ID 23227, 2014 property taxes in the amount of $447.17. Record ID 17568 in the amount of $713.55. Record ID 11226 in the amount of $1,430.52. Record ID 61992 in the amount of $1,430.52.
Any questions for Kyle? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve the abatements A through E. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, those abatements were for veterans who are permanently disabled, and it's interesting, they would come in after Memorial Day, and, you know, I think it just shows the ongoing burden that veterans carry beyond a single day that we celebrate.
Thank you. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is notice from the 605 Holistic Health Incorporated of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle on June 21, 2015, at Big Sports Bars and Billiards at 3110 West 12th Street, Sioux Falls. Item B is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for projects MC122BR-15 replacement of structure 50-243-100 on highway, County Highway 121, a quarter mile east of County Highway 121, Eros Road. DJ, I could have let you read that, read that.
Good morning Commissioners, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. This project is on County Highway 122. Currently, it is a 54-foot, three-span bridge structure that's in pretty rough shape. It is load limited, and the ADT on this road that we took last year was 475 vehicles per day. And so this bridge has been designed, and we are ready to advertise for the letting, and we hope to get your permission to do that today.
Are there any questions for DJ? I'd look for a motion to authorize.
So moved. Second.
Motion as second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. The first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish notice of a hearing at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, June 16, 2015, to consider adoption of the Minnehaha County Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Good morning.
David Heinel, Planning Department. The Minnehaha County Planning Department is bringing forward the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan. This is a first reading to publish notice of a hearing on June 16, Tuesday, at 9:00 a.m., to consider adoption of the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which we have provided copies to each of you, as well as the state's attorney. There is a copy available in the county auditor's office as well. And anyone, any interested individual can contact our office and feel free to leave comments on that plan up to that date, and especially attend the hearing as well on June 16. In addition to that, the Planning Commission held, if I back up a little bit, they held a hearing on May 18, and advanced a unanimous recommendation for adoption of the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan. And if I could just briefly show a link to the website. The plan is available on the website envision2035minnehahacounty.org. If you go to the planning page, there'll be a link, Invision 2035, and click on that, the plan is highlighted out. Click on that, it'll take you right to the full document, or if you want, you can download each individual chapter in that plan. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions for David? Okay, we need an authorization for publication of the notice.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion as second to authorize publication of the notice. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, David. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Jeff Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first one is DPNO 2946 for $20,369.85. We actually heard this one last week, and after we declined his offer to release the lien in full upon payment of $10,000, he immediately came back in and asked to resubmit with a offer of $12,000 to release it in full. So the story is the same as the one we heard last week, and at this point, I'll make a motion to decline his offer.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to decline. Is the applicant here? No. Any other comments? Commissioner Barth, did you have a comment?
Well, I would urge him to reconsider and come forward with a greater amount.
I have a motion and a second to decline this DPNO 2946. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number B is DPNO 86967, the amount of $513.60. Commissioner Barth.
Thank you again. This is a problem that we've encountered in the past, and in this particular situation, a person sent his mother in for treatment as an IVC case. If I were to send someone that I did not know, I would not get a bill. But if you send a family member, you wind up getting the bill, and we've addressed this before, the legislature hasn't changed the law. But basically, we've had several cases like this where, you know, a grandmother would send her grandson for treatment and winds up paying thousands of dollars. In this case, the amount is $513.60, and it, it's just wrong that they get that bill. If I was to, you know, send an independent person no bill, but if you send your own child or whatever, you get the bill. And I would urge the legislature to change this. In the meantime, I will make a motion to forgive this lien with no payment.
I have a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve the DPNO. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next one is opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the commission? Okay, we'll go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a presentation of the Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office 2014 Annual Report and Caseload Analysis. Tracy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I apologize, I'm getting over a cold. Each year, thousands of residents of South Dakota find themselves in the crux of the criminal justice system. Most of them are charged with nonviolent offenses and are all presumed innocent. Many of them enter the system because they're either have undiagnosed mental health issues or have addiction issues. Two-thirds are arrested and imprisoned pretrial and are held in jail because they're too poor to post bond. Not only are they too poor to post bond, but many of them are too poor to hire a lawyer as well. 100% of the time, the county is required to provide them with court-appointed counsel either through the public defender's office or the public advocate's office, or through court-appointed counsel by private attorneys. If the public defender's office or public advocate's office can't represent them. In 2004, we represented 6,943 of those individuals in the criminal courts, juvenile courts, magistrate courts, and circuit courts here in Minnehaha County. We also represented people at bond advocacy hearings in magistrate court and circuit court, and we laid the groundwork to reduce recidivism with diversion programs and alternatives to detention through JDAI and through Drug Court and DWI Court. We closed through, as you can see through the annual report, 1,483 felonies, 400, excuse me, 4,193 misdemeanors, and represented 2,00, or excuse me, 289 juveniles. We also provided representation in 1,000 noncriminal cases, which would include your child support, abuse and neglect proceedings, parole matters, appeals, habeas, your alcohol commitment matters, the fugitives from justice, and mental commitments. If you were to do a five-year comparison over the last five years, you would see, I can't see that very well, that we are continuing to grow from last year. You can see that in 2013, we had opened 6,681, so we are continuing to grow in our caseloads. What I can tell you from the trends that we've seen is that we saw a 300% increase in our felony simple assault cases. I don't believe that's because we're seeing more felony assaults. I do believe that might be related to the change in the legislature with the impact of felony simple assaults, that you're able to go back, a third simple assault related to 10 years as a simple assault. We also noticed that our probation violations ordered to show cause matters doubled, and I think that might be related to possibly we're seeing now with Senate Bill 70, more probation violations rather than charging people with new offenses, that perhaps we're just seeing more probation violations. I still think it's too early to tell with the impact that Senate Bill 70 is going to have, but for now, that's just some of the trends that we're seeing. Is there any other questions, any questions anybody has?
Any questions, Commissioner Barth.
Tracy, how successful have those drug courts, whatever, and things like that been as far as diverting people out of the regular system?
I think they've been very successful. They reduced the amount of time that people have been held in custody. I do think the, as far as the success rate, I don't have the statistics with me today, but I think they do very well as far as reducing recidivism and keeping people from coming back. I don't know at this point in time, as far as after they graduate, what the success rate has been. I think it's still too early to tell with that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, are we not tracking after graduation, or is it just your office is not tracking?
Our office isn't tracking it.
Is there any communication with anybody regarding?
I would assume that the Second Circuit Drug Court or the Court Administrator's Office is, that our office just isn't doing that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth.
Going back to that Drug Court issue, I heard from an outside attorney that he had a client who could have been a candidate for Drug Court and wasn't allowed to be because he had a previous drug-related thing. And he told me that there have yet to be any persons of color in Drug Court in Sioux Falls.
I believe that would be inaccurate.
Oh, good.
I think there's a lot of information that goes into play whether a person has, they can have known on, but they're, they can't have any violent history, they definitely have to be somebody who would be going to the penitentiary but for Drug Court. But I just know from experience, from seeing people in there, that they do accept minorities, that I believe that would be inaccurate.
That's great, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, anything else, Tracy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number 11 is consider recommendation to reject submitted bids for the purchase of video surveillance recording system for the jail and consider authorizing auditor to republish notice to bidders. Jeff Gromer.
Good morning, Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. Just two quick requests. One, I would ask that you reject the bids that were opened on May 13. I'd also ask that you authorize the auditor to republish a new RFP. I think part of the reason why the bids came in so high on this recent one is the wording, some of the wording in the RFP, it was very, very detailed and specific, requiring a set mechanism. It also included verbiage that led the bidders to believe that they were bidding on the current jail plus an expanded facility. The new RFP would clarify that, that we are looking to provide video recording coverage just for the current jail, with the ability to expand in the future. The bids came in well over what we had estimated for.
Are there any questions for Warden Gromer? I'd look for a motion for the first part of it, which would be rejecting the bids.
I'd make a motion to reject the original bids.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. I'd look for a motion to authorize the auditor to republish notice to the bidders with corrections or change of verbiage.
I would make that motion. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 12 is a briefing of the proposed fiscal year 2015 Minnehaha County Highway Budget Supplement utilizing South Dakota Department Surface Transportation Program funds. DJ Boothie.
Good morning Commissioners, again, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. Today, I'm just giving you a briefing on what I would intend on bringing back to you next week for approvals. So just trying to start the conversation to see if there's any information that the commission requests as part of the request next week. Every year, the Highway Department has received an allotment of funds that passes through from the federal government to the state government, and then to the counties as part of the Surface Transportation Program. It's about a half million dollars every year, and it's ranged in the 400,000s all the way up to almost $700,000 every year. And because of the transportation funding bill that was passed earlier this year, the way that the county received those funds is going to change. We had a bank of about $2.3 million, I believe, that had been unused STP funds sitting in peer, and what the state anticipates doing, and has confirmed that they will be doing, is doing a payout over five years of that funds, and then the annual allocations that we used to receive are no longer going to come from the federal government. The state is actually going to keep that money, and they're going to give us state funds. So it really opens up the way that we can spend those dollars. We're not held to certain federal guidelines for those expenditures. All in all, it's a very good program for us. Because of the way that the bill was passed this year, that is going to start this year, and we had not anticipated that in our budget, and so we're receiving unbudgeted revenues to the tune of over a million dollars. And so what we looked at was, as part of this bill, for expanding our project list for future years, we have a lot of work next year that we would like to start designing this year in order to make sure that we get a bid on a good timeline to get good bids. In order to do that, we should start design. We have identified three projects that we would like to start designing in 2015, be able to bid it over the winter months, and then go into construction in 2016. Those three projects that we would like to start designing in Brandon or just outside of Brandon, the northeast corner of Brandon, on Redwood Boulevard, there's a structure that we intend on replacing. That bridge, we've looked at for the last couple of years. We had originally wanted to do a major rehabilitation to that. During our last bridge inspection, they indicated that we should be replacing it, and so we're working with the state to try to get that as part of the bridge replacement program that they're setting up. However, in order to get additional points for that, we would like to start designing that using our own funding, and then turn it over to the state for bidding and construction purposes next year. If they don't approve it as part of the grant this fall for construction in 2016, we would reapply to get that constructed in 2017. The second project is the reconstruction of County Highway 149 from Brandon to County Highway 122, and that's a big project for us. A reconstruction project requires a lot more design timeline than a simple mill and overlay, for example, or even a bridge reconstruction. There's a lot of work and background stuff that goes into a reconstruction. So we would like to start designing that very soon in order to get the ball rolling for bidding it this winter. The third project is a combination of two different structures doing bridge rehab projects on a bridge just southwest of Dell Rapids on County Highway 110, and then just west of Eros on the Eros Entrance Road. Both of those bridge decks need not to be completely replaced, but a low slump overlay, which is what we did on County Highway 109 last year on a structure. It's a really good treatment, really extends the length of a life cycle for those structures. And so we would like to do that on both of those. And then the one up by Dell Rapids, one of the abutments needs to be replaced, and so there's a lot of design work that goes into that. We would like to do those together as one construction project, because a lot of the work is very similar with the two low slump overlays. We feel like we'd get better bids if we did them together and then bid them this winter in order to move forward for construction next year. In addition to those three construction projects that we would like to start designing in 2015, we have a couple items that we intend on purchasing in 2016 that we would like to move forward with purchasing in 2015 due to lead times with the equipment. There's two message boards that we have in the budget for next year for a total of $42,000. Now, with all the additional construction that we have going on, it would be nice to have two additional message boards on hand and start using them immediately. And the lead time is, I want to say, eight to 10 weeks, something like that, after we get them purchased. And so we would still be able to use them yet this construction season if we were able to move forward with the purchase. And then in 2016, we also have an asphalt patching machine budgeted. That's a $60,000 item approximately, and that would replace our existing patching machine. Asphalt patching is typically done, this type of patching is typically done in the spring and in the fall, and this piece of equipment has a longer lead time. And so if we were to purchase it in 2016, even right away in January, it's likely that we would not receive it in time to do the spring patching. In 2016, we'd have to wait until the fall. And so if we were able to purchase it yet this year, we could probably yet do the patching this fall, and then also in the spring and fall of next year. So those are the items that we would hopefully move forward with in 2015. If you add up all of the estimates for those items, we'd be looking at a supplement of about $732,000, using the million-dollar-plus revenues that we have, that we'll be receiving this year that we had not anticipated. And so all of these items would not be done under the 2016 budget as we had originally proposed. Does anybody have any questions on any of the specific items or the manner in which we're looking at doing the supplement?
Commissioner Barth.
DJ, you know, some of these projects could change over the winter and the spring, right? I mean, rehab on a bridge that was, you know, further damaged by ice or whatever, you know, whatever we do in preparing with engineering on rehabbing it, it might be a bigger project next spring. Might not.
There's always a chance of some changes over the year, but we, our typical process is to design a structure in one year and then construct it the following year. We started doing that maybe two years ago on a regular basis, but we found that by bidding it over the winter months, we saved so much money on bid prices as opposed to trying to start a design in January and then complete that design and bid it in April or May. We save so much money by bidding it earlier that any changes by doing it a year earlier offset by that savings.
Any additional questions?
If I may.
Yep, Commissioner Barth.
So we've been getting long without these message boards at this point, right?
Right, we currently have four message boards.
Okay, and so this would be replacements or?
We would, we would like to add these to our group of four message boards. Right now, we have two old style and two newer style. And if you, if you imagine seeing message boards out on the roads, there's what's called a matrix display, which is a full square grid pattern of letters that are kind of customizable, similar to an LED screen. And then there's an older style, which actually has digits that can change the letters, and you might be able to fit seven letters on one line. The older style does not allow for any graphics or any different sized letters, where that newer style, you can have graphics like a construction sign, or you can have really big, bold numbers for a speed limit, that kind of thing. And so we would like to keep our old ones, but this, just add this to the, to the group of the four that we have. We have a big need for message boards.
Any other questions? Okay, this was just a briefing in preparation for next week's item. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got the next one. Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign Amendment Number One in the amount of $5,106.17 to the contract with interest IDG for the project MC1416 Emergency Response Project Construction Administration. DJ, not that I annihilated that.
This is for Infrastructure Design Group, or IDG, for the emergency response contracts that we had from the FEMA and ER projects that were from the flooding of last year. We started working on several different sites and ran into some unforeseen field conditions working around the bridge ends, and so they had quite a bit of extra work that is needing to be completed to complete the work, the construction, and they're asking for $5,106.17 to amend their contract. Our staff has gone through their proposal and gone back and forth on the number of hours and things like that, and have determined that this is an acceptable amount, and so we would like your approval on the amendment to the contract.
Any questions on that amendment?
This is just the design, right? This is not the project.
The design is completed, and they're under construction right now, but they ended up finding a large scour hole during construction that needed to be taken care of, and some additional permitting that was done. And so this is for construction administration, and then there will be a construction change order that will be following up after that negotiation is finished.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
For approval? Second.
Motion and a second to authorize the signing of Amendment Number One. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 14 is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement for the Indian Child Welfare Act Qualified Expert Witnesses between Minnehaha County and Luke Yellowrope. Mr. Kretner.
Thank you, Commissioner Heiburger. I bring before you today two contracts. Commonly, every year, we have two contracts related to these qualified expert witness services. These are mandated by federal law, the Indian Child Welfare Act, that we, as These are mandated by federal law, the Indian Child Welfare Act, that we, as the state's attorney's office in abuse and neglect cases, provide an expert witness to, with a background in cultural practices, et cetera, to give expert testimony in these cases, in the case where there might be certain placements of Native American children through these abuse and neglect cases. The State Department of Social Services provides essentially a grant of money to pay for this service, this expert witness service at the state's attorney's office. And then what we do is we ask that that agreement is accepted with the state, and we in turn have an independent contractor that contracts with the state's attorney's office to provide, actually provide those services. So essentially, this is revenue and expense neutral to the county. The state DSS provides the funding, and we retain the independent contractor to give these qualified expert witness services on behalf of the state and county in these abuse and neglect cases. So we'd ask that you sign those agreements today. There are those two agreements. The only ones, terms that are different from last year's agreements are the amount of compensation is slightly higher, and there's an added phrase in there about some reporting requirements, to be more specific, but otherwise, they are the same contracts that you authorized last year. The term starts on these June 1st.
Are there any questions for Kirsten? Is there a motion?
So move, second.
Motion in a second to sign the contracts with, sign the agreements for the Indian Child Welfare Act. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 15 is consider a resolution to declare AS 400 server with external DVR, RAM, and tape drive asset number 72960 as surplus property and authorize donation to the city of Sioux Falls.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Autumnbach, Minnehaw County IT Director. So in 2005, the city and the county had a joint project using some grant funds to purchase an AS 400 that both of us used as our disaster recovery AS 400. That piece of equipment currently sits down at our headquarters. It is 10 years old, and this year I had funds budgeted to replace that piece of equipment. The new piece of equipment costs $24,000. The old piece of equipment cost about $8,000 a year in maintenance, so financially, it just made the most sense for us to do a hardware refresh, pretty much pays for itself in about three years. The existing piece of equipment is technically under the county's name. That's how the grant funds came, but it's really co-owned by us and the city. In order for them to continue maintenance on that piece of equipment, because they are going to continue using it, we have to transfer ownership from IBM's perspective over to them. So that's what this, this will allow us to do. They will then carry the maintenance and pay for the maintenance, both their portion and our portion, because the whole thing's going to be theirs, so they will pay that maintenance moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions for Monty? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to declare surplus and a donation to the city of Sioux Falls. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 16, excuse me, is authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 agreement for the middle school diversion officer between Minnehaw County and Lutheran Social Services of Sioux Falls. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, for many years, we've been the recipients of a juvenile accountability block grant that has enabled us to institute a diversion program called the LSS Middle School Diversion Officer Program. And we've utilized those grant funds to have LSS provide that service as part of our JDAI initiative for at least the last four years. These grant funds are due to expire at the end of June. In fact, the, for the grant funds for this year, the program expenses will probably be exhausted by the end of May as we look ahead. And so we had anticipated this, and this cost is built into our, for the remaining year, the remaining months of 2015 in the JDC Alternatives to Detention line item. And so we've, we have constructed a contract that will keep this program going from June through December of 2015. As you can see, the diversion officer carries a caseload of approximately 15 to 18 youth, and we figured that between now and the end of, the end of the year, they'll probably serve an additional 50 kids that are on the program. One issue that we have with this is, as we look forward to 2016, particularly in light of Senate Bill 73, and some reimbursements that come from the state for diversion as part of Senate Bill 73, is how, is which budget we will end up putting this program into if you agree to continue funding for 2016, whether it should remain in the JDC budget, but since it's a diversion program, should it be in the state's attorney's budget? Those are discussions that we'll have at budget time and anticipate hashing that out. But again, we had anticipated that this program would be running until the end of the year, and we've made allowances in the Alternatives to Detention line item in the JDC budget to pay for it.
Okay, any questions? Commissioner Bender.
So just, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're going to pay for this through the end of this year, but you anticipate that this program will continue into 2016, but that there'll be state money available at that point?
There's, the way Senate Bill 73 works, there is specific dollar amounts for every kid that you can put into the, to a diversion program as a reimbursement, reimbursement. And so it would be our intention to make application for those funds as part of a reimbursement for diversion, this along with some other diversion programs that we're involved with. And then again, that's why we're kind of got up in the air where we would put this contract and the funds for this into a budget, you know, based on who's going to be overseeing it.
At this point, you don't think we're going to fund it through the middle of a school year and then drop it?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not.
Commissioner Kelly.
Now, this is not the Sioux World Resource Officer.
It is not.
And what schools does it apply to? All in the county or just outside the city?
Primarily, their biggest caseload comes within, I'll be honest, within the middle schools, within the city of Sioux Falls.
Within or without?
Within. That's where the biggest referrals come from.
And the reason the schools don't participate in this is?
Why they, because this is a diversion program of the county, because county controls diversion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Second. I have a motion in a second to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 agreement for middle school diversion officers, officer between Minnehaw County and Lutheran Social Services. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is discussion and consider motion to amend Resolution MC 1125, a resolution establishing costs for temporary malt beverage liquor license, malt beverage licenses and temporary liquor licenses to change the number of licenses that may be issued to any person with, in one calendar year. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, you had a discussion of this at last week's meeting concerning the number of licenses that could be issued under the auspices of the Temporary Malt Beverage and Liquor License for Special Events provisions. You have a copy of our current resolution and that whereby we establish the rules and the protocols for that, and as part of that, under subset section six, we have limited the number of licenses to six, to any individual within a one-year period. When this was originally brought to you back in 2011, there was no limit because of the varying nature of the types of licenses, but there was some concern that this may be an opportunity for some folks to avoid getting a regular license in that hand. There was a discussion to limit it to 10, or excuse me, to 12, and then that hit failed, and then the motion was made to limit it to six. I'm not an expert in this, but the person sitting at your table next to you can probably answer any technical questions that you have regarding the number of, how this process works and the application process works for the temporary license, but we're bringing this back to your consideration because there seems to have been a lot of discussion about, you know, is six the right number, or should there be a number associated with this whatsoever? And in order to do this, we would have to amend our current resolution that outlines the parameters for this. So if there are any questions, you know, we, again, we're just bringing it back to the table at your direction, because this is an issue that you want to talk about.
Are there any questions? Gene, excuse me, Commissioner Bender.
Ken, have there been any complaints or concerns expressed by the caterers or those that are applying for these licenses that their business is impeded because they can't get enough licenses?
They have not come to me, but Cindy would be the one that would deal with them directly when they come with the application process, but I have not received those types of complaints.
And I haven't received any complaints.
Point of order, no microphone. Can you trade?
I haven't received any complaints, but they do know that they only have six, so they just abide by that, and they know that they can only service outside of the city six times throughout the year. Most of their catering is done in the city of Sioux Falls, but we do have several locations now out in the county that do quite a few wedding receptions, so it does limit their ability to service those weddings outside the county or outside the city.
Commissioner Kelly.
Cindy, and who gets the license? The caterer?
The caterer.
And so they set up what, for them, is a for-profit bar?
Correct. They already have a state-issued liquor license, so they are eligible to get a special event license, which allows them just to sell at a different location.
What's a state-issue license?
Just a regular liquor license that any bar has or.
That they paid $200,000 for?
If they're with, if they're closest to the city of Sioux Falls.
Otherwise, what do they pay?
It depends on the size of the town. For instance, Brandon is $8,000. Third-class municipality is much less, I believe, $1,200. So it really is whatever city they're the closest to, that's what a state-issued license fee is determined by.
Okay, so they have the regular off-sale.
They have a regular.
On-sale liquor license.
Correct.
This is simply a method for them to take that license and use it over here?
At a different location.
At a different location, correct.
Correct. Or for fraternal, educational, those types of organizations for their fundraisers. So they don't have to have a state-issued license, but you do have to be a nonprofit fraternal, educational, one of those types of organizations.
So the only thing, the only competitive advantage is they don't have the brick and mortar probably that a regular bar would have, but they do have the same license?
No, they do have a licensed location.
Yeah.
Like all locations from Hy-Vee, their licensed location is in T, South Dakota. Chef Dominique, he has.
Well, that's interesting. I mean, T's license is a lot cheaper than Sioux Falls.
Right, that's probably why they have it at their T location, I would assume. But Chef Dominique, they have a license and they have a physical location in the city of Sioux Falls, but they do catering outside of the city at locations in the county. Rocky, Johnny Corinos, that's another one that has catering, and they have applied for a license and received them through the county to operate outside of the city of Sioux Falls at a location.
Commissioner Berth.
It's interesting, Hy-Vee.
Commissioner Berth.
Going back to Hy-Vee for a moment, you know, the fact that there are, say, five or six Hy-Vees in Sioux Falls, they don't each get six licenses for this, only the Hy-Vee in T can cater?
They are the ones that have the on-sale liquor license, so they are eligible to sell on-sale with a special event.
Okay, so if we were to change it to a higher number, that would just give them a little more latitude.
More opportunity.
The person I think you're really limiting is the person who's hiring them, because if they decided they wanted to have Chef Dominique's for a caterer, and they went to them and Chef Dominique says, "I already done six events," they've got to go find a new caterer. Or same with Hy-Vee, if they've already used up their six on somebody else's event, they can't move on to anywhere else. That person who's trying to hire them is the one that's being limited more than anyone. So I would be in favor of either lifting it or putting it back up to 10 or 12 or just removing it, because it's not, it's not hurting anyone other than the consumer who's trying to use the caterer. Commissioner Berth.
Another question for Ms. Jepson here. So could they do the same number in Lincoln County as well as Minnehaw County?
That would depend on Lincoln County's ordinance.
Okay.
Right.
But does not that county issue have anything to do with the fact that they're in Lincoln County with their license?
It has to be anywhere in the state of South Dakota.
Okay.
So actually, somebody from Rapid City could come to Sioux, come to Minnehaw County and ask for a temporary license?
And we do require their license number, and we do check with the state to make sure they do have a correct license.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I would agree with you that six is a pretty low number. At the same time, you know, it's, I don't know, we don't make any money ourselves really on this. Certainly, we do get a small fee, but it's not much in comparison with the cost of alcohol in our, in our community, and.
Gerald, excuse me, Commissioner Bender.
Cindy, could you clarify for me if, in fact, they have had licenses in the past, but we've had an issue with underage drinking or whatever through that location, through that license, what would happen if, in fact, they came back for another license?
I think that would be a question for Mr. Kattmeyer.
I mean, if you were put on notice that that was going on, it is entirely within your discretion to say, next time a special license application is brought forward, to say, nope, we're not doing it, so.
So there's not an automatic review of a request for additional license on a background check with, let's say, the sheriff's department?
I don't believe so. I don't believe there's any sort of automatic background check. I know with our regular licenses, we informally ask if there have been.
Correct.
Violations around the county, and we certainly report that to you, but ultimately, it's within your discretion. If you remember, you always have to affirmatively vote on granting these licenses, even if they're permitted to have a larger amount, so.
And in addition, they are sent to the sheriff's office for their review of special event licenses, and they are, a public hearing is issued, so it does go through a more formal process than just an automatic renewal of malt beverage and alcohol licenses.
Commissioner Kelly.
Well, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought Gene's question was kind of, is there an issue here, and I haven't heard one. Maybe trying to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist, and if that's the case, you know, we've globalized liquor laws enough that I'm not sure we need to do any more unless they themselves come in and make a compelling argument for why they should get more. I haven't heard any thing that's brought that up.
Madam Chair, a question. So are we looking at the fees for these one-day events as well as the number?
No, we're only looking at changing the number of temporary licenses. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to increase these from six to 12 for conversation.
I have a motion to increase to six to 12.
I'll second that.
With a second. Comments?
Well, I do think, I do think there's something to, those facilities have stuck them, you know, not only 100 or $200,000 into a liquor license, but also have a brick and mortar establishment of, you know, two to three million dollar value. The fact that nobody's, nobody's really in reason to think about it, I think it would be best just to leave the ordinance as it is right now.
Any other comments? Gene, excuse me, Commissioner Bender.
I think Mr. Kattmeyer had a comment.
Yeah, just, just a comment and a request for clarification here, too, just so we understand what the motion is. First of all, this would apply to your nonprofit organizations as well, just so you all understand that. But the point of clarification is, if you pass this today, are you intending for all those additional licenses to be available in this calendar year, since we're halfway through a calendar year? So just as you, as your motion is now, I think, once that goes into effect, whatever the higher amount would be, would be in effect for the whole calendar year. So that's up to you as the commission.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Commissioner Bender?
I mean, I do think that perhaps this is not a problem, you know, and I'd probably feel more comfortable addressing this, that people were actually having an issue with that. So I don't think I'd be in favor of just completely removing the cap at this point. It does seem like it's something that's within our control, kind of regardless of what we do. I'm not opposed to raising it to 12. I think that's reasonable and quantifiable and still limited at some point, and I wouldn't be opposed to increasing it for this year. I just think we have a lot of other things on our plate, so sometimes I'm not sure that we should address things that aren't really problems, but...
Any other comments, Commissioner?
Well, I can tell you from a practical experience, we get lots of requests in our facility to obtain a liquor license. It's our board's decision not to do that, except for special events that we in particularly have. But the problem is, is that the, the majority of the caterers don't have a location, frankly, to be able to do it, because they're so busy with, you go to, for example, the Brandon Golf Course, and their facility is booked for almost a year and a half. So people who are in the need for a location are searching for different locations outside of, quote, "the normal" process. So I don't think it's a competitive issue, it's not a brick and mortar issue, it's as much as trying to find someone that even will do the catering. I think we had that, I can't think of the name of the company that is just east of town.
Oh, that's the new one out in the Red Rock corridor.
Right. And, you know, there, there's opportunities for people to use those if they choose to be in a, quote, "bar" location, but there's going to always be more opportunities, I think, for people who want to stay out of that atmosphere, to say the least.
Any other comments? Commissioner Burr?
Ms. Jepson, isn't it true that you can get a beer license for $50? I mean, what does it cost to get a beer license for, you know?
A state-issued license or a special event?
No, just a state-issued license.
$300.
$300. So, but then you could have, and you could have wine as well then at that time.
That's a separate license.
That's a separate license. But that's not that expensive if you're having numerous events. This just would bring in the more high test.
And some of these, like Kirk's Gun Club, they do have a beer license, but the people a lot of times want a full bar.
Sure.
So that's the alcohol license, and that's where the caterer comes in.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to change it to 12 and to include the whole year. Is that part of the motion?
Mm-hmm.
It's part of the motion. Any other comments? Commissioner Benega?
The one thing I would like, some feedback from the sheriff's department to see if they have any concerns about that. I know they're not here today, unless, do you have some comments? Didn't think you would.
Yeah.
You know, if I might, in regards to your thought there, Gerald, I was at a family event north of Sioux Falls some distance, and the small town nearby there, the bar is only open three days a week. And Saturday night, they had a bus from a neighboring larger city full of possibly high school kids and stuff that just hit town, raised "holy heck," screaming and shouting, drinking and smoking, and, and apparently this is a regular event in some of these small towns up there, and the bus just goes to a different town every other week or so. And, you know, it's, it's concerning that we, you know, have, you know, the sheriff isn't going to know where they're going.
Cindy has a comment.
The sheriff will know because they get sent these special event license for their review prior to issuance.
Right, but the bus isn't letting them know. They're going to a bar in a small town with, you know, a population 28 and, and taking over for the night.
That's still a responsibility of the bar owner to card people, and I would hope that's not happening. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Just one quick that Jeff touched on, you know, we sit here and complain about no alcohol beverage income to the county and the fact alcohol is involved in so much of our increases in our public safety sector. I think we should keep it in mind that we're just continuing to liberalize the whole thing. You know, we've gone from you had to stay in the bar and couldn't even take a bottle out on the sidewalk to, to people with fancy glasses sitting on the sidewalks now drinking wine right on the, right with a bottle on the table. So I, I just think we're, you know, nobody's complained, and we're just exasperating and exacerbating an issue that's our public safety that we've already been fighting. There's reasons there's controls on alcohol.
Okay. Any other comments?
I will tell you from my personal experience again, that we get numerous requests from a caterer outside of the city limits and outside of the Minnehaw County that resides in Iowa, who is always looking for the ability to serve beer or wine for a wedding reception, sometimes even a wedding, in locations other than a bar or whatever you want to call it, because they don't want to have that kind of an atmosphere, frankly, that Jeff's talking about or anyone else. It's not a bar location, it's an event, and the events are limited by the caterer and the facilities, and there aren't enough, that's why you have an all-occasions and the group that's in Red Rock. I hope they're all successful. The one in Brandon, obviously, is very successful, but they're still looking for an alternative site rather than the ones that are, quote, "normal" conversations.
I have a motion and a second on the table to change this ordinance to 12. Do we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Burr?
No.
Bender?
No.
Benega?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Hy-Vee?
Yes. Motion fails 3 to 2. Okay. Item number 18, consider a resolution to declare two Minnehaw County-owned copyright cop, photocopies, a Rico Aficos, I'm sorry, I annihilated that. You want to read those? Monty, are you, no, Kirsten, okay, I'll keep going. 1075 copiers, serial number J4335800173, asset tag number 71730, and Kiosera KM8030, copier printer, serial number 8030H3011176, asset tag number 90700, as surplus property for disposal and removal from the asset, the capital asset list.
Kirsten Catmire?
I'll try to keep it brief now.
Yeah.
The Audit's Office alerted the state's attorney's office to these two items still being in the asset list that we keep for assets of the county. These were basically taken off the premises by the vendor of the new copiers that we had to get. Essentially, we got to the point where these two copiers were breaking down so much. We've got an employee count of, I believe, of 40 some now, and we have two photocopiers, and often one of them or occasionally even both of them, I believe, were out of service. It got to the point that we just needed to acquire new copiers. As part of that process, we didn't declare these surplus and log this destroyed. The vendor of the copiers that we did get actually did destroy these copiers already, so this is more of a bookkeeping exercise at this point, but they do need to be removed from the capital asset list for auditing purposes. So we would ask that you do that through resolution today. It's just a requirement, so...
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Do we need to hire outside counsel to see if this was all handled properly within our own attorneys?
Well, you'll have the opportunity for outside counsel now, so, item 19.
Item 19, consider motion to authorize the appointment of the Boyce Law Firm LLC to represent Minnehaw County in Hutchinson Technology Incorporated versus Pam Nelson, treasurer of Minnehaw County civil suit, I assume, 12 dash 1342. Kirsten Catmire?
Thank you, commissioners. This is brought to my attention by our outside counsel that you had retained to represent the county as a party in Hutchinson Technology Incorporated versus Minnehaw County. If you recall, I brought this before you two years ago now, I believe, as quite a weighty case in that this particular property owner was challenging in court the certain, certain valuations of their property, and as such, the type of claims that they're bringing really has the risk to upset the valuation of property throughout the state. So it was a fairly high-stakes litigation. As part of, as kind of an appendant case to that, there was also a case filed, which was Hutchinson Technology Incorporated versus Pam Nelson, treasurer of Minnehaw County. That's, of course, Pam in her official capacity, just as the collector of taxation. Essentially, this other suit was a suit where they were preserving their objections to a couple of the year's assessments, I believe the '08 and '09 assessments. The issues in these two cases are intertwined, they just happened to be in two separate files. Your appointment order for previously that you approved, allowing Aaron McGowan to sign this limited appointment for Boyce Greenfield Patchbean Whelk at the time, was only for that 11 dash 3864 case. I'd asked that you extend that appointment to the successor firm, Boyce Law Firm LLP, for file 12 dash 1342.
Are there any questions for Kirsten? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments?
Commissioner Hager, can we just have a roll call vote so I can reflect that I recuse myself?
Okay. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Burr?
Yes.
Bender?
Recuse myself?
Benega?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hy-Vee?
Yes. Motion passes 4 to 1 recused. How you put it? Okay. Item number 20 is Minnehaw County lease on reports. Are there any reports?
Okay. Is there any new business? Commissioner Benega?
I tried to get your attention before, but I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In reference to the copiers, I thought we had set up a system where IT was coordinating those with the, those copiers as printer connected, if you will, and that we were coordinating all of that through your department to be able to network all of them?
Yep. So the IT department is involved with the acquisition of these multifunction devices, because they're not just photocopiers anymore, they're printers and they're scanners. So typically, departments do come to me and, and involve me in the process just because I see it, you know, so much, I'm familiar with the different products. So the state's attorney's office did come to me and reviewed the different products with them. And, you know, we're, you know, for the most part, we know that kind of, you know, vendor A has the lowest-cost product for that entry-level machine, but when it comes to these machines like the state's attorney's that are faster and color and have more features, we did have a couple of different vendors give us those proposals. So I worked through that with them and was involved, and we've been very pleased with several of the different vendors that we've worked with and a couple of the different products, so...
I wasn't questioning whether those were done correctly. It was more important to me to understand that that system was still in place.
Yeah, it is, you know. So we do have a couple of different products that, that we still see. I think in an ideal world, we just have just one, we choose one product and say, hey, we're all brand X, Y, or Z. But there is differences when you get into the higher-end ones versus some of the entry-level ones and that price piece that comes into play. So I feel that we're doing, overall, doing a really good job of getting the most bang for a buck, and we haven't had any issues with, you know, a certain product not working as a printer for us. I think it's been working very well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burr?
I thank you for bringing that up, Gerald. So, Monty, do we have then a simplified logistical stream with people coming to your office for a printer ink and stuff like that, or is it...
Yep. All of the, all of the toner for printers comes through our office, and we're typically working through a company here in town that kind of has, you know, refurbished toner, so we're getting a super good deal. So that's, all the toner for printers is centralized. When it comes to the MFDs, the copier printers, those typically come with a maintenance plan that includes that toner from that vendor. That's part of kind of their revenue stream, and a part of that, typically a part of the lease agreement for that machine is, the machine, you know, if you're leasing it, costs this much, and then the maintenance, which includes toner and includes repair, if there's any issues with it, is all part of that maintenance plan. So toner for printers streamlined through IT, toner for copiers, part of the lease and comes directly from the vendor, reseller.
Any other questions? Okay. Any other new business? Any old business? Okay. I vote for a motion to adjourn into executive session for contracts and legal briefing.
So moved to second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.